Counselor Crowell.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm not quite sure who to direct my line of questioning to, but I do want to take a moment and thank everyone for coming out here today and sharing with us a look into the future as it relates to high-density transit, which myself and my family also, also you, I know this will be a welcome addition to the community at large. One particular station that I'm keying in on because it's close to two folks I represent will be the Quincy Adams. So I know I'm a bit torn if you were essentially going to be tapped as a project manager.
Correct.
Welcome to the interview. Quick dialogue. To sort of give you a little bit of history and maybe a preview, I think our meeting is on for April 11th over in Woodport.
In Amherst.
Correct, in Amherst.
Yes, I understand.
And I actually represent the neighborhood, a large part of it, along with the council from Woodport over there, Council of Almucci. We represent the Penns Hill section of City Point, which I don't know whether you are or are not familiar with, but it's actually the neighborhood's Ohani Quincy Adams Transit.
I am familiar with it. I'm a resident of Quincy also.
Okay, all right, perfect. I did not know that. So we've had a very interesting and evolving conversation over the last couple of years driven through the neighborhood associations, and I noticed one of the goals for the Quincy Adams rebuild, $42 million investment, and one of the goals was essentially to increase accessibility usage?
Yes.
Now, does that trickle down to the pedestrian?
Yes, it does.
So just to sort of give you a preview and, you know, the council from Woodport and probably your firm, what you'll hear to some extent, I don't know why, but from those folks up in the Penns Hill area that come to that meeting on the 11th is, you know, again, it's a mixed conversation. Some folks are very interested in increasing or establishing pedestrian accessibility, right, because some of these folks, you know, they live in up there at Fox and Park and they walk to Quincy Center. Some of them actually walk around the access road down to Quincy Adams, which is, that's a pretty, it's a pretty bold move, but, you know, these were some of the comments and sentiments that were driven out of neighborhood meetings that were conducted by board councils. So where I see, you know, it's a substantial investment of money. We're grateful, obviously, to have it, $42 million. Is there any sort of tension or thought process around creating pedestrian accessibility in that section?
Yes, so is council. We are including designing the scope to make the Independence Ave entrance that was for emergency vehicle access, I believe at one time was pedestrian access. We're going to get that ready to open and working with the city whenever it is okay to open via the city, we will be ready to open that. But we are operating to get it, make sure it's accessible.
Well, again, it's a very, it's a very evolving conversation. These valid points on both sides, so whatever you suggest, you know, friendly reminder, just keep in contact with local officials, but you will probably, I'm almost certain, hear some of that next week at this public meeting. So I look forward to attending and thanks again for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor. Thank you, Madam President. Again, one first question I have, because I know, again, in terms, I guess it's in relation to some of the mitigation, but it's also, I'm sure, in some ways in relation to the voting service, but the extension of Commander Shea Boulevard, I know which one of you wishes to address that.
Sure.
Is the plan for that, that extension, I trust that is going to go into Squanton Point Park? It's not in any way going to rely on the private ways of Marina Bay, is it? Will the extension will be continued straight through up to Squanton Point Park?
Following the design that we're working for the city, yes.
So it doesn't rely on any private ways with Marina Bay at present moment? The other question is, given the idea of the continuance of water service or your investment specifically in that, this body not too long ago invested close to a quarter of a million dollars of floats to make that possible. My understanding is, is that in the last Norrister, those were wiped out, they're gone. And I guess the question I would have, before we pour any more of our money into that specifically, if the plan is, is to utilize in some way boat service, is there going to be any engineering or any possibility of creating a breakwater water to make that possible? Because if not, going to be repeating the same site over and over again?
Counselor, first, it's not my understanding that the floats are gone. My understanding is that the gangway separated in the storm and that everything's still there. That is a temporary solution, no matter what. If permanent water transportation is only being placed, there will be accessible gangway, accessible docks and floats. And that's something that we'll all run during the study, determine what infrastructure need now. You point out a very good point, that it does get weather coming in off the ocean there. I don't know, I'm not technical enough to know whether it's feasible out there to not interrupt the voters coming out of the bay. It is, there should be some issues with that, but we're looking to.
There is going to be some engineering related to the, I mean, in terms of the feasibility of this moving forward, let's say.
I think no matter what, if there is going to be current service, there are floats in pylons and the gangways, there are going to be much more, I use the word again, robots, they may be much, they need to be much bigger, so therefore I think there would be much less susceptible to weather, but again, it is something that marine engineers will work with us on in our study and we will certainly be sure we point that out.
I guess, and the other question is, again, I think the single biggest issue that I know I'm going to hear from people about from people is going to be the parking and the additional traffic, and not so much just the people who are utilizing those lots as commuters, but also on the part of neighbors that live close to it because even as the system is now, there's a sense of overflow into neighborhoods, the people parking or utilizing TA parking in specific neighborhoods. Is there going to be a mitigation parking plan that's, it sounds like, again, you're back, you're looking for Plan C, so to speak, at this point. Will you be making back some type of mitigation plan for parking before construction actually begins, or are we just going to kind of wait?
Yes, we will definitely. We have until January 2018 come up with a plan, again, with the options that we put there, we're very confident that there will be ample replacement parking. We're looking, we can manage most of our shortage onsite or on our own property and available. We'll start from core areas closest here we can and then we'll go out towards Squanton Point. We will, back to you all, continuing to work with the city.
My guess, the impact of even closing all these things just puts incredibly more pressure on the municipality.
We recognize that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Okay. I, oh, okay, sure.
You can go first.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you guys being here tonight, coming out. I certainly don't envy your jobs running the MBTA. Got to be one of the hardest jobs in government, left with long overdue infrastructure, needs an age system. It's a tough job, so I don't envy you guys. I have a couple of questions just about, I represent the area with a Quincy Adams station. So just the timelines for the Braintree and Quincy Adams stations?
Sure.
It's two years and three years, and it looks to be at the same time. What's the total loss of spaces in the combined facilities that you're looking at?
The combined loss is 300 between both stations at any one time, but we're putting in the contract that has to be done all weekend when the stations are fairly empty, the parking and the garages are. And another point is.
How many, how many total spaces at Quincy Adams? You losing 300, not how many?
I believe Braintree has, or will have, it's just under 1,000 now, and will have just over 1,000 in its final condition. And Quincy Adams is close to 2,000 and will have about 37 extra spaces.
So you're talking 10% loss of any parking space in any year, is that approximately?
Yes, but you have to bear in mind that the construction activities that will need that amount of spaces are very limited, and again, will be done on weekends. Most of the construction activities will be taken blocks of 25 to 50 spots, so we're working through our phases now to, to make replacement parking for that at both garages. We have 130 at Braintree and we're having close to 300 at Quincy Adams by maximizing spots on our own property, especially in the north parking lot there.
And I just want to introduce yourself. What's your role at MBTA?
I'm the project manager for the South Shore direction, and also I'm helping Joe Chivero on Quincy Center.
Have you and I interacted before about things going on at Quincy Adams?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. So I just, I didn't see, as it relates to the Quincy Adams garage, there'll be no ramp closure?
We will close half of that, the Center Street, is that what you mean?
It's the only ramp, I think.
Yeah, we'll close half of that to resurface it.
But only on the weekends?
Only on the weekends.
So that we know, there'll be no reason for traffic to get off the exit rather than take the ramp to go down to the Bergen Parkway Center Street?
No, on weekends, traffic is too, into the garage is very light, so we don't anticipate that.
Have you guys ever done studies as to where folks come from who park at these two garages? I can't imagine many Quincy residents are parking in Quincy. I don't know what the Braintree situation is, but.
Just my opinion, my fair guess is, you know, most people down in three.
Right. What about, Counselor Crowell had asked some questions, I'm going to follow up on that in a moment. Pedestrian safety improvements, would that, would that be looked at in terms of Bergen Parkway entry? Have you, have you gone down there at all and watched how people are accessing the T?
Center Street, that's, Center and Bergen Parkway is very dangerous.
It's a tough spot. I mean, I'm not saying it's the MBTA's sole responsibility. The city has a lot of responsibility with that. I hope it's something we've been working towards for several years, trying to get a hand along with redesign that intersection a little bit in terms of pedestrian pathways, but I don't know if you guys are intending on kind of taking a look at it to see if any improvements can be made, or at least incorporating the improvements that the city's made in with kind of how pedestrian access flows into the.
We're going to make sure the road cuts at the Center Street sidewalk and the Bergen Parkway sidewalk are accessible, and if there's anything needed along the sidewalks, we'll certainly address.
It's got to be one of the most dangerous approaches to an MBTA station.
Sure.
Especially in the winter when you have the, when you have the snow in the middle and it's people are, the lights aren't fast enough for, you know, a non-Olympic sprinter to get across before they change. It's, you know, just driving bodies, people taking their lives over there. And they're usually doing it at the point right at the intersection, as opposed to walking down to where the light is and where the, you know, the crosswalk is, where it's a lot safer, the lights are timed better. So it's, you guys looking at from your perspective in terms of pedestrian flow to help manage people, you know, herd them in that direction rather than when you see them walk down towards the intersection and cross there. I don't, I mean, I don't know, but you guys are in the public transportation business, so I'm sure you can figure out a way.
It's, you know, it's a very concentrated, it's a family, but sidewalks adjacent to the garage and the station, we would definitely address.
It'd probably be better if it didn't have sidewalks. I mean, I'm just kind of spitballing, but if you didn't have them going all the way from the station, station entrance down to that intersection, an intersection literally leads to nothing. It's not as if someone needs to go down that sidewalk to get home. They go down that sidewalk to get to the dangerous intersection where they then cross. If there wasn't even a sidewalk along that stretch, they would have no choice but to cross at the light in the crosswalk where there's a signal that's timed for the length it takes someone to cross, and then they can walk down where there is a sidewalk and over. Something to think about moving forward.
Well, definitely.
I'm sure there's a million reasons why that's a horrible idea, but you guys figure that out. Now, as it relates to the Independence Ave gate, I have to say, I've had the privilege over the past seven years of serving in government where we have meetings with people who are affected by things, and then we make decisions. What I've noticed about the MBTA is you guys make decisions and then you have meetings with people who are affected by those decisions. You know, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're presenting, but part of the impetus of this was, I sent the MBTA a letter because I heard you were closing down the, the ramp, and I heard that you were attempting to take by eminent domain Home Depot's parking lot, which I understand is still progressing.
No, so we're not.
So the letter, the letter to them has been rescinded?
I know we're just not pursuing that purchase in that form a lot.
Any longer?
Any longer.
But you were at one point.
Exactly, yes.
So I had been presented with the letter that Home Depot received, saying that you were starting the process to take that by eminent domain, having heard nothing from the MBTA. My only assumption, based on what the letter said about trying to take something by eminent domain in a parking lot that's only reachable through the intersection of Bergen Street and Center Parkway, Bergen Parkway and Center Street caused me quite some concern, as you can imagine. I sent the letter, didn't receive a response, and then you guys followed up thereafter after this, the local paper wrote an article about it. So I'm glad you're here, nevertheless, whatever brought you here. But in terms of this Independence Ave, so this is the first time I'm hearing that, that this decision has been made, that you guys are going to work towards opening up that gate. I've held several community meetings, I've been in people's living rooms talking about this issue, I'm talking to the mayor about it, the counselor who represents the other half of that area, and at no point has, have I been informed that the MBTA had a plan to open that up. So again, this is decision, meeting, you know, not, hey, we're going to have a meeting, let's discuss. You have a meeting in less than a week. Right, let's, yeah, less than a week, yeah, tomorrow. Next Tuesday. You have a meeting April 11th, which I can't be at. I didn't select the date, no one consulted with me of the day, I have a family obligation that I can't get out of, so I can't even be at the meeting where, I take it, you're going to get asked a question about the MBTA gate and you guys are going to announce that, well, this is what we're going to do, what you said tonight, which is going to infuriate half the neighborhood that I represent and cause applause from the half of the neighborhood. So this is a problem for me, because now you've just announced this, I can't be at this meeting, and I'm, and I'm short on time to tell the folks who would most be impacted by this decision that you guys have made, that they should come to the meeting, I guess, to tell you that they disagree with your decision.
Let me first apologize for the lack of public meetings. My colleague Joe Chivero did a much better job than I did as far as informing people about the loss of station. The, it's not a decision, I just want to make it crystal clear that it's called getting ready to open.
Sounds like a decision. That sounds like you saying, listen, let's open it. The city wants to open it, they can open it. The city doesn't want to open it, the city can't open it, but we're going to build the infrastructure so that it can be opened.
Correct, so at some point in the future, it's anticipated that, you know, the time will turn and people would rather walk to school, maybe all the students at RGEs or people in that neighborhood or what have you. I heard, you know, some talk about maybe purchasing some property, not by the T, but by the city to make a drop-off pickup to preclude on double parking, you know, on Independence Ave. But I just, I know how touchy the subject is and I basically.
Which is why, if you know how touchy the subject is, is why I'm surprised that we would make this announcement without, I mean, did you notify the mayor's office? Didn't notify me, I don't, I see the state senator sitting out there. I don't know, was his office notified, was the state rep, was Ron Mariano notified of that?
We did notify the mayor.
I just want to clarify.
If I could hold off saying. Through you, Madam President, to Mr. Walker, can you tell me the date that the mayor was notified? Because I wonder why the mayor wouldn't notify me, he would notify me.
Yeah.
Can you please answer the question? No. Okay. So it's either he wasn't notified or he's notified a really long time. Go ahead.
So I just wanted, I'm sorry, my name is Beth Larkin, I'm the assistant general manager for Capitol Boulevard. I really just want to reinforce the point that John is making is that the T is approaching this in a way so not as to preclude a future decision as to whether or not to open that up to pedestrian access. This project does not include pedestrian access off of that parcel into the garage. It does not. What it does include is the ability to, in the future, make that decision, so as not to preclude that.
What does that mean? In the future, have the ability to make that decision?
It means it'll still be fenced off so that you can't access it from.
So you're not making, with this plan, this proposal here that you talked to us about tonight, there isn't a single dollar that's being spent relative to opening the gate on Independence Ave?
As John mentioned, there's some infrastructure improvements that are being made, so if the.
So it sounds like we're heading in that, in that direction. So folks who don't want to have that happen might be very upset to hear that the MBTA and its very limited resources, which we're all very familiar with, is spending money in furtherance of a policy that half the neighborhood disagrees with. And I'm just wondering where, where the impetus for that comes from. I mean, I represent folks who want it open and folks who don't want it open, it's a very undecided issue.
I think we're basically leaving the city point to decide whether or not we want it open. We're just trying to make it so that it gives the, some flexibility for being able to make that decision, but I think we defer to you on that.
Okay. Mr. Walker, actually.
Sure, I would have loved to have known that prior to you guys announcing it to public media, but, Mr. Walker.
Through you, Madam President, to reiterate again that it will be the city's determination whether or not that gate is open or whether or not there's pedestrian access. If the T wants to do some work in its facility, that may make it possible at some point or may not. It's, the city's determination and the mayor clearly has not made a final determination of whether or not it's appropriate use. He faces the same conflict as you folks do with this body, as there's a good number of people in both neighborhoods who would love to see it open, and it's historically been a good number of people in the neighborhood who would hate to see it open. We have not reached a final conclusion. I know it's been a bit of a time, I know we started this process quite some time ago and had some meetings on it, some things have come up, some things have developed. This project has developed, the potential for redevelopment in the site has developed the potential for some further studying of traffic patterns and parking patterns across the city has developed. A lot of things are out of play, but we're not going to make a judgment either way based on what the T may or may not do as part of its God repair project. That decision's going to be made by the city, and before that gate is open, if it is ever open, there's going to be a lot more meetings, a lot more improvement in the community, and a lot more development of an actual plan. Right now, like it's been going on for the last 30 years, there's just, there's a lot of talk about it, and people are expressing opinions and people are providing input, but we haven't reached a state of scale where we have anything, anything resembling what would be a plan to open the gate at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And I appreciate your input on it. My frustration stems from learning of this for the first time tonight after having numerous conversations with the MBTA about the community meeting process and about my concerns related to closing of the ramp. So that's where my frustration comes from. Again, I don't envy you guys in the job that you have, it's hard enough, so, you know, people like me kicking machines, but that's what's going to happen when I feel like there's really insufficient outreach about these issues. I mean, I've sent letters to the MBTA that don't get responded to about this issue. I've sent letters, we've had community meetings, I invited representatives from the MBTA to each one of those community meetings that I've hosted, I didn't get a response back. So to see you for the first time, you guys tonight en masse, and then you just kind of throw that grenade out there in the middle of the well, it's, it's very surprising to me. So I'm sure that'll come up, and I'm sure that'll be a subject of discussion.
To reiterate, the T has made no decisions.
Well, you did make a decision. I was wrapping this up, trying to do it a nice way, but if you want to continue to debate this, I'll debate it with you. The T has made a decision. You've made a decision to use your limited funds and limited resources to prepare the infrastructure in a way that will allow the gate to be open in the future should the city of Quincy want to open it. That is the decision that you made. You could have made the decision to do nothing and use those dollars elsewhere, right, like at pedestrian safety on crossing Center Street and Bergen Parkway, you could have done that.
Appreciate your distinction, sir.
Right, but there is a difference between that, so you have made a choice, you've made a decision, now we're having the community meeting about it after the decision's been made. I appreciate your time, thank you, I won't take any more time.
Okay. Counselor here.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank my followers for asking and talking about some of the mitigating, additional mitigation. My question is, I see, you know, I'm very interested in, especially Wood 6, because when you start closing things down and you start doing constructions, finding traffic management police details at the Pontiff Circle. That is very interesting for the people of Wood 6, because can you tell me when that will take place, at what point in time of when you start doing the first project, the first closing down, the first, when will those details, because when they did the bridge over and they had details there, and I had a disagreement with the mayor about how many police officers should be out there, but at the Pontiff Circle, when will that take place? What point in time of the timeline of all of the projects? Because everything funnels through to go to Boston, just about from, from everything from the Four River Bridge all the way up through to us in Wood 6. When, when will that take place?
Counselor, that, we will begin the details, the wall, the station is closed, but the contract, there's a setup period, the contract is due onsite working and when that's closed, but we will certainly work with you in the council and legislative delegation, mayor's office to set that date.
That you're well aware of, that's, that's great, that's, that's supposed to take place, I appreciate it, thank you. I would, but that wasn't a decision, it was absolutely, thank you.
And, thank, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think all of us in the city council, one of our top issues that we have, that we deal with in our constituents, is traffic and parking, traffic and parking. The entire public transportation corridor of the South Shore is under construction at one time. We have existing issues, and while I am ecstatic to see you tackling the South Shore redline infrastructure, it's really going to create some serious headaches for us. We talk about what the plan is, and it seems with Wallston being closed, the bus, the plan is just bus between Wallston and North Quincy. That North Quincy intersection, the Nopontiff Bridge, is hands down the number one traffic and parking prob, traffic problem the city has. We talked a little bit about the Squanton Point Park, the DCR facility. Why, to me, it seems this is the perfect opportunity to partner with water, establishing water transportation. It's been one of the city's goals for a long time, the city's been doing its part to pilot. The MBTA overnight shut down our ferry transportation, just walked away from it, and yet we see the opportunity for, you know, a more clean transportation, getting more cars off the road, and you have an existing 1,000-car parking lot with a very easy commute to Boston. Cars coming in off of Wallston Beach, we could reduce who's going over the Nopontiff Bridge and release that pressure. Has there been serious consideration to alternate transportation as your mitigation plan? Because this is immediate, I mean, we're talking about, things are about to get started.
That's right. Dan, Counselor, there has been very serious consideration of more robust water transportation. We did a study as part of this effort, this program of projects, this mitigation effort, and we learned quite clearly that there was no way we could get the facility built in time to complete our study. The permitting alone for a, for a permanent facility there would be almost at the end of the tail end of some of these projects, so that is when we worked with the city to come up with the idea of what will it take, what will the timeline take to come up with permitting service? And number one, will people use it? And we've heard loudly clear that people want it, and will it be worth the investment? We as stewards of the public's resources, we have to make sure that we give them the service that will be used and that we're in a total partnership with it. That's part of the study as well. But yes, it was looking at it, and that's why we decided that the, let's try and take these seasonal services and make sure that stays up and running, runs as long as it can, perhaps there's a different vessel.
there's a different vessel that can run all year round. And we are working through this now with Maureen, the team here in the city, but at the same time doing the long-term study of what will it take to have a permanent service that will be on the property.
So I'm quite familiar with coastal infrastructure and water transportation, and understand completely that the permanent, the permitting phase and what is, what undergoes to get that on a permanent new facility, similar to your hangout facility. But we have something that, mind you, it's mandated, and it probably, you know, maybe it isn't something that's ready to handle the volume, but it is something that we've been able to pilot water transportation and get, get it up and running on a smaller scale. The schedule last year wasn't really conducive to what the city residents needed, and I think they are working further along this year. But if there was a commitment by the MBTA to bring back water transportation in Quincy, this would be, will leave a lot of pressure for the residents of the city of Quincy and the entire South Shore. You know, previously, when the Quincy Ferry operated out of the former shipyard, almost everyone in Quincy had to backtrack to get help on the ferry. It is such a better position to be down at Squon Point Park for Quincy residents to take advantage of water transportation. And I just am not seeing these solutions as we're just going to bus between Wallston and North Quincy as sufficient. I mean, you have traffic issues, and you're pushing more volume through the buses on our streets right into the heart of the problem area. So I appreciate the police details as an option, I think it's a necessary option, because we dealt with it for years with the Noponce Bridge construction project, but I don't see that as a sufficient mitigation plan to be able to move the volume of traffic through the entire South Shore. Every single South Shore station is coming, you come through Quincy to get to Boston, and it just, the capacity's a challenge. In my district that I represent is the Quincy Center Car and Garage, and the demolition, five years of having it closed, we have traffic issues infiltrating the neighborhood, parking issues infiltrating the neighborhood, the structure itself has become a blank, and we're pleased to see the project demolition occur. As far as timeline, it'll be at your meeting next week. Looks like July 2017 is your demolition date to begin with the full structure taking over to December 2018 to be demolished, the full demolition timeline, or is there something else being built into that timeline?
No, just demolition down to the second level.
Demolition to the second level. And so I know there was talks, the city had done, begun some design, partnering with your design, and I just don't know where that project stands. So there's an agreement with the city and the MBTA as far as station RFP going out. I guess I'm looking for an update on that.
Station RFP, I can't, it's, it's on the agenda at this point.
John, John.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, are you speaking about Quincy Center?
Quincy Center.
So, we are looking to work with the state and the mayor, and doing some RFPs and others. And so this is going to be a coordinated effort to build something that is light, and North Quincy where there's housing, commercial potentially, but we're leaving it out there and bringing out RFP, but again, we'll work closely with the city to do it, and we're looking for any business to have on it.
Maybe, through Madam President, to the mayor's office, hadn't there been a design agreement that the city was the lead of the project?
Sure.
There was maybe...
Yeah, there's, through Madam President, I've heard this. Several years ago, there was some legislation that was passed, the helpless and the D and Representative Marion, that put the city in a position of some authority to stop working on potentially developing new facilities at the site. At that point, we received a legal, it was a federal grant, for about a million dollars to work with Prossens Brinkhoff to work on some initial design and engineering, not so much designing, in this case, I think it's mostly site engineering, it's a very complicated area, and I think they were basically working on the underground, the scope of things that would need to happen there. And that was all predicated off the basis of the potential, because the city was, as you may remember, approached by the trial court, the Commonwealth, the T camp, what the potential of having a quarter, a public safety facility, courthouse at that site. When that concept sort of went away for a couple different reasons, that it didn't saw, it didn't eliminate the work that Prossens Brinkhoff had done, it just puts it into a different bucket. And so now, the work that Prossens is doing, they are working with the team, their real estate folks, on developing a desired P that's going to go out in Portimao, as opposed to, we had a really project come in, we were going to negotiate with them, it didn't really get too far off the starting line. What's going to happen is now the P will go out and people will compete with their vision for what they see as the best development of Quincy Center.
And the mayor's office will be involved as far as hiring some rescue, so similar to the North Quincy game?
Absolutely.
Okay. So just timeline on that is, and so timeline, so the demolition is ready to go, set to go, the funding's in place, and as far as future development, stay tuned, RFP to be issued 2017?
Perfect.
Okay, great. I appreciate, I appreciate your time to look forward to the public meetings, I think it's very important for us and for our constituents to understand what to expect as all these projects unfold, it is something, it's going to impact all of us daily.
Okay, thank you. Yes, again, thank you all for coming this evening. I just want to remind folks, what's that? Oh, okay.
Very quickly, Madam President, through you to Mr. Walker. It was mentioned specifically about the plans related to the extension of Commander Shay Bolbar, and the extension of that, that that was a city plan that they were working on. Could you, could you be able to get us copies of that?
To the degree it's been designed and engineered.
Perfect, great, thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. So just to remind folks, tomorrow, April 4th, the Wallston Station renovation will be discussed at Toma Towers at 2:00 PM down in the mall on 80 Clay Street. And then, again, tomorrow evening at 6:30 at Central Middle School, and I know Joe will be there, and Rick will probably be there, and the team will be there, as Joe commented before, I was the counselor, so I remember going to meet with him before. So, thank you all for your work on that. Thursday, April 6th, the Quincy Center Garage demolition meeting will be held here at Old City Hall, down in the lower hall at 6:30, begin at 6:30 at Old City Hall. And then next Tuesday, the Quincy Adams Garage renovation at Quincy Hamlock School at 6:30. So folks who are wanting to go to those meetings, they will be also on the Quincy.MA. website, and you can find them there. But thank you to all of you for coming to sign me up for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Number three, agenda, 2017-053 appropriation, $266,41, $9 cents for PPA. Are you on the administrative salary?
Yes, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you very much, Madam President. With your intelligence, I'd just like to recognize the auditor, kind of pay some perspective on this appropriation.
Madam Madoff.
Yes, Counselor. This appropriation is in part due to negotiated contract increases. There are about 10 lone municipal administrative positions that generally go in retrospect with the PPA, so they are also included in this particular council vote. If you recall, at the beginning of the, when we voted on the budget, there was money set aside in reserve for appropriation salary line, and we are taking money out of that particular line to fund these contract increases. There currently is about over $700,000 in the account, and after this appropriation, there will be about $454,000.
So with that, I mean, it's something we discussed a bunch of times, you know, it's coming out as a several pieces in the accounts of the approval.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Finn. On the motion, Counselor Finn.
And again, I think it's kind of customary, specifically where you're in, you made this reserve for appropriation negotiations that have taken place to movement. I'm just curious, then through you, Madam President, to the auditor, are we, how many of our contracts are left to be negotiated at this point, that you're aware?
I don't believe there's that many, maybe about two or three.
Thank you. I'm happy to support it, and see you in the next.
All right, for the discussion, see none, Madam President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Bellwiki.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members.
Next, number three, agenda is number four, 2017-054, order municipal schools building statement of interest in Squon Elementary School, emotional way of reading. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I did urge my colleagues to join me tonight in supporting, supporting, moving this statement of interest along to the messages of school building regarding. We took our first vote on this last year, and this vote tonight will maintain Squon Elementary's place as the next priority school building project in the city of Quincy. In discussion with the mayor, he has told me that he expects the feasibility phase of this project to begin as early as next year, or possibly 2019. Those dates are largely dependent on progress with Sterling Construction. As most of you know, Squon School is a direly, as was mentioned tonight by, by the mayor, of replacement. Squon School was built in 1919, and the neighborhood and its families are quickly outgrowing this facility. Squad improvements have kept the building functioning for some time, but as we continue to upgrade our schools citywide, there's no doubt that Squon School needs to continue to be a priority. I look forward to working with parents, the neighborhood, Mayor Coke, and Superintendent E. Christopher, from beginning, from beginning to end, as we make this project a valley. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor DeBona. On the motion, okay, Counselor Finn.
I was hoping, hoping that Counselor DeBona would allow me to, to second, given the fact that I've had seven kids. It's only two years.
You know you were upon school.
I think it was at least 14, 15 years of going to Halloween parties. But anyway, happy to support it.
Awesome, thank you. All right, any further discussion? See none, none, Madam President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calmwood.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members. Thank you, Madam President. And then, as our formal adjutant for this evening, next we move to approval of the previous meeting minutes, from the meeting of March 20th, this one ends here. All those who favor? Aye. Okay, you guys have the minutes approved. Communications or reports from the mayor, other city offices, city boards, Madam President.
I don't know what you said.
Okay. Well, we did have room tonight, so we'll go with all time. All right, thank you. Unfinished business in the proceeding room. Yes, Counselor DeBona.
I don't know, I just, I'm just really listening to you, I just wanted to make a, just a note, I think we'll do it in the next round with the announcements. Did we do that yet?
No.
Okay, no, sorry.
Okay. Unfinished business in the proceeding room. Reports of committees, Counselor Forrest.
Okay. In the ordinance committee, in Ward 2, Counselor 2017-042, to add handicap parking at 77 Ray Cross Street, I move positive recommendation.
Okay, positive recommendation, Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, on the motion, Madam President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Bellwiki.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
In Ward 4, Counselor 2017-043, to add handicap parking at 56 Hughes Street, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Calmwood, on the motion, Madam President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Bellwiki.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members.
In Ward 5, Counselor 2017-044, remove handicap parking at 129 Beet Street, I move positive recommendation.
Remove by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, on the motion. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Bellwiki.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members.
In Ward 6, Counselor 2017-045, to add no parking on both sides of Bay State Road, Quincy Shore Drive to 100 feet north of Quincy Shore Drive, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, on the motion. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calmwood.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members.
In Ward 6, 2017-046, to remove handicap parking at 33 Cummings Ave., I move positive recommendation.
All right, motion to approve by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, on the motion. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calmwood.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Still in Ward 6, Counselor 2017-047, add no parking on the east side of Vane Street from Billings Road to 12 Vane Street, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, Madam President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Bellwiki.
President.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Last one, Ward 6, Counselor, Order 2017-048, add a 10-minute parking sign on the east end of Hodges Court, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris, okay, on the motion. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calmwood.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor Calmoochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor Fars. Further reports of committees, okay, now, presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance, Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. This past week, a friend of, friend of folks in Squat lost Paul McDonough, Paul who was with Dorchester, moved to Quincy over 50 years ago. He was a veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps and served during the Korean War. Paul was a Boston policeman and later served as a detective for 29 years. One of Paul's highlights was he was chosen to, when Pope John Paul came to Boston, he was chosen to be part of his career. Paul leaves behind his wife Marie, his daughter Lysel, Erin, and Paula, who will dearly miss him. The family has asked, in lieu of flowers, and we've mentioned this this evening, donations to be made to the Quincy Animal Shelter. So hopefully folks would donate to Quincy, Quincy Animal Shelter in the name of Paul McDonough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Harris. Certainly a great family and somebody who's given back not only to his community but to the Boston area as well as, I have my sorry, it's policemen, so thoughts and prayers for them. Anyone else? Okay, Councilor DeBona.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you for the meeting tonight, the autism awareness, thank you for doing that. I just want to elaborate a little bit. Yesterday, April 2nd, was Autism Awareness Day. It's been going on for 10 years and, you know, when you hear that slogan out there, light it up, it's for understanding and accepting it. I want to thank everybody around here, Andrea, Roger and Andrea, Noble, White, Gabe, these of you guys, thank the entire council for wearing some ribbon pins tonight, you know, dear to my heart as well. In addition, all Quincy police vehicles have the autism ribbon badge on all of them, so they're going to be having that on for the whole month of April. The department is also hosting a bowling fundraiser on April 22nd to benefit ALEC, which is Autism Law Enforcement Coalition. It educates first responders in responding to all calls involving individuals with autism. And, you know, if you don't understand autism spectrum disorder, it's a wide variety of on the spectrum. Studies say that one out of every 68 children that is diagnosed with this, one in every 42 boys and one in every 189 girls. Some studies say it's one out of 45 kids, so it's on the rise. Please, you know, keep that word out there for the fundraiser that the Quincy Police is doing. I just want to thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor DeBona. Councilor Calmoochi.
If I could, thank you, Madam President. I just ask that the council keep in its thoughts and prayers this evening, the Quigley family who lost one of their own recently, Andrea Rose McDonald, formerly Quincy, Quigley, although she lived in Waymouth, she was born and raised in Quincy. She comes from a well-known family in Quincy that probably most of the members of the council know somebody in that family, most likely Kathy Quigley, the director of the Charlemagne Neighborhood Association Neighborhood Center, or Jim Quigley, who was formerly a congressman, Keaden. I just ask that we keep the Quigley family in our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time.
Of course. And you, Councilor Calmoochi. Motion to order, resolutions? Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings, they need to be scheduled. Yes, Councilor Crowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to touch on the meeting scheduled for next Monday with the group, which is a finding committee, obviously, put that on the board, the last time they've met. Again, it's a 6 o'clock start, you know, topics to be covered, you know, Mr. Walker, I'll need your help on this, but first we'll go over the streetlight replacement program. So I don't know if you can work with the gentleman from Siemens and make sure that he's on hand to answer any questions. So, you know, I know we've seen a preview, had a little bit of discussion, but we'll get into that next Monday. Then we'll have the, an opportunity around the public hearing on the capital improvement plan slash park to violation presentation we just saw here this evening. And then we'll go into what I would assume to be the part piece, and I can work with Chris to figure out, you know, who will be the presenters for that night and, you know, my commitment to you folks will be, I'll get it out to you, advise Thursday, is that reasonable, Chris? All right, so you can look for emails from me by Thursday, I'll sort the profile of the evening events. Thanks again, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Crowell. Monday, April 6. 6:30 PM.
6. We had it at 6.
Oh, 6?
Oh, you got it.
Ew.
It'll be a tight agenda, I promise.
It's the whole good dream and, all right. All right, great. Thank you, Councilor Crowell. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor.
I'd like to, so everybody's, and do me if I could, Madam President, last, just to let everybody get their information.
Okay.
Sure. Public notice of public meetings for the thing.
Catherine Fars, did you?
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't want to interfere with everybody else's meetings, what they want to propose. We're going into a budget season and CID, it looks like from here on out it's going to be a busy, busy timeframe for all of us, so I just wanted to ask the council, as we're in the meeting law, we can talk about this, is I'd like to bring about some of the, from the education committee, some of the substitutes here, is I wanted to see if we could fit that in on April 18th before the 7:30 meeting, it was a 7:25 public hearing. I'd like to just, I just need about 55 minutes, 6:00, 6:30. I want to see if we can get a form. We got here, let's see, Harris, King, Leeang, and Calmoochi, Councilors, so I wanted to see if we can get a form, if we can have this meeting before at 6:30, if there doesn't interfere anybody. Tuesday, is it the 18? Tuesday the 18.
At 6:30.
At 6:30. 6:30 to 7:25, or 7:25 public hearing, 7:30 meeting.
And this is an update?
One of the hearings.
We've got one last.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have people coming?
It's 20:20.
Yes.